Thank you. The only item on the agenda today is the airport site selection study update. For that presentation, I will now turn it over to Deputy Senator Manager, Mr. Mike Faust.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, welcome to the new council members and welcome to the crowd who's joined us for this afternoon's festivities. We're here to touch on the airport site selection. This is part of the ongoing due diligence effort to study the feasibility and ultimately site selection and impact should the council choose to move forward with an air park. For this conversation, we'll touch briefly on why an air park. We've talked about this in the past. I will very, very briefly touch on the framework for the feasibility study which was presented to you and is now available on our website to the community. I think it was presented back last September. I'm joined by Patrick Taylor from Kaufman Associates who has led the feasibility study and the site selection. He will walk us through a detailed review of that site selection study and then I'll bring it back together for a closeout and a summary of that. So just at a super high level, why an air park? Again, one of the three council priorities being economic development. We're really focusing on what are the available options out there. And I think it's important to note that an air park represents an economic development opportunity. We've been looking for a catalyst for growth in the north part of the city and the idea of an air park is not a new idea in this area and so that ultimately led to this latest evaluation. The due diligence effort that we've undertaken has been comprised of the feasibility study, as I stated, the site selection, and then the economic development studies that went along with it. The feasibility study and the economic development studies and associated memos are posted on the city website. Under council priorities, there's a spot where we store all those documents. After today's presentation, the site selection report, the actual study itself, will be posted in that same location for the community to consume. Just want to give a special thanks to the technical advisory group. We've been surrounded by some great partners along this way. I won't go through each of them because they're depicted here, but this is no easy task to read these long documents and ask meaningful questions and I just want to thank them for their efforts and energy to participate in helping us to present a complete view of this situation. So before we jump into the site selection, I just again wanted to highlight the feasibility study of it. And we're not going to go through that whole thing. I got three or four slides I'll just touch on ever so briefly. Again, this study was completed late last year. It was presented to you then and posted for public consumption. It really was broken into three individual components. Element A looked at what is the market, right? Is there really viability? Is there demand in the marketplace for it? Secondly, it looked at what are the airport facility requirements and how does that match up against it? And then it looked at an in-depth feasibility analysis, looking at the development process and other associated components. That was all packaged together, produced in a singular report. And the 140, 150-page report really drilled down to this one slide. A new airport in Peoria meets the threshold for feasibility initially, and that means it has an initial demand of 10 based aircraft. I believe the study said there was roughly 80. It filled a void in the regional system. We'll see a map here in a little bit from Patrick. It actually shows kind of a hole in the northwest area where there's not an airport. And it also served as a capacity relief for some of these other airports. So when we left that one, it was very clear that there was demand. It was feasible. Now the question became, is there a site that could be selected from the various options? And for that, I'm joined by Patrick Taylor from Kaufman Associates. He will help walk us through that portion of the presentation.
Thank you, Mike. Patrick Taylor from Kaufman Associates. So we've been working on the feasibility and the site selection study for about a year and a half and it's our honor to be doing that. So I'm going to summarize some of the technical findings that we had from the site selection So first, Mike mentioned that when you're looking at the need for a new airport, one of the criteria is, is it filling a void or a need in the system? And this map shows that. So the black airplanes are existing airports and there is a visual gap in the system around Phoenix in the northwest area. So it makes sense to kind of look for an airport to fill that void. When we did the feasibility study, we developed forecasts of aviation demand which were based on new demand in the region and not taking activity at existing airports. And it was substantial. So there's definitely a need in the region if it can be accommodated. A familiar map of the city of Peoria. So when we were starting the site selection, we don't always look for sites within a particular municipality. It is certainly feasible for airports to be located outside of that municipality, typically on the periphery. But in this case, we limited the search to the city of Peoria. And so this is kind of the first high-level narrowing down of potential areas. So the red box is kind of the site selection area. Obviously, everything south is already developed, very residential, wouldn't be appropriate for an airport. So somewhere up north, within the red box, would make sense. So the square on the right-hand side identifies, so the black areas are areas that are excluded. So they're either developed or they're a road or things like that. The brown is mountainous areas, so that's not going to be suitable. So everything in pink is kind of what our search area looked like. And then we identified two particular sites to drill down a little bit deeper within the So the process of the analysis is a GIS data model, so geographic information systems. So these are several of the data inputs, which include roadways, wetlands, proximity to transportation, surface transportation, floodplains, just the general slope of these sites, as well as other incompatible land uses like schools. You don't want to be right next to a school or church, something like that. So all of these data inputs were created or put into the model, which is on the left there. So all those bubbles and squares is the data model and how we technically did that. Right in the middle is really probably the best visual of how you do that, is you overlay all of these data models on top of each other and the output is what you see on the right, kind of the blue shaded map. So everything in black, again, is excluded and then the lighter colors are more suitable and then as you go out, the blues get darker and so they are less suitable. And the mountains are very blue, the hills over there. So we have two sites. We tried to, or we, on the next two exhibits I'll show you is a prototype airport, one in each site. So this is the first site, which is actually co-located with the former Pleasant Valley Airport. So everything in red is new pavement, a new runway or apron area for aircraft parking. Yellow is new buildings, hangars in this case. And then the blue is roadways to get there. And then we're also taking into account an opportunity for an adjacent air park, so industrial commercial type development to help support the airport. So this is the first runway. It's the, it's the long-term plan. So it's a 7,600-foot runway. This is planned as a general aviation airport. No plans for commercial service in the long term. The maximum type of airplane that you would see there would just be large business jets. So, and when we're positioning this prototype airport, one of the key things that we're always taking into account is to meet FAA design standards. So we want to be able to show that an airport can be located in any area that meets FAA design standards from the outset. And maybe just to catch up a little bit, these site selection studies, which are not done very often, there's usually just a handful in the country every year because there's a large system of airports already. But there is a FAA prescribed process and that's what I'm describing to you right now. We followed that process. Ultimately, FAA may or may not participate in that or an airport could be built by the municipality or by a private developer themselves. But we followed the process that would allow for any of those options in the future. This exhibit also shows a couple of factors that are critical in the assessment that we did in terms of the ranking matrix. So the yellow lines are tall power lines and you can see they, in this one, at the south end, it crosses the runway. So those are an issue that would need to be dealt with if you were to build a runway like this. You can also see the contour lines. So there's a large swale on the west side of this particular site, but where the runway is located is relatively flat. So that's pretty good land to support a runway. And then on Site 2, which is just to the east of Pleasant Valley Parkway, the orientation of this runway is a little bit different because of the site itself. Again, this shows a 7,600-foot runway, hangars, apron area, and then adjacent business park area. And again, those tall power lines are going right through where this runway would go. So something would have to be done with those power lines in order to accommodate this site. Just so you know, when doing these site selection studies, you never find a site that scores 100. There's always challenges for any of these site selections. So, you know, usually it's typically a cost, an added cost to accommodate it. Another important consideration, Phoenix, is a busy aviation area. You know, there's a number of airports. Of course, you've got Sky Harbor. This is a map of the airspace in the region and the former Pleasant Valley Airport is shown on that. So that's, that is Site 1 and just to the right of it is Site 2. And so we need to take into account all of the airspace, potential airspace issues because if you're going to build an airport, you need it to be usable and it needs to be capable to accommodate that projected demand. And I'll talk a little bit more about the airspace here in just a second. This is a zoom-in of that previous map with the two-site runway center lines overlaid. And so some of the airspace issues with these two sites is that kind of white area that you see, that is a special use airspace associated with Luke Air Force Base. And it's a piece of airspace from 3,000 to 4,000 feet. So that could be an impact on operations at one of these new airports. Not prohibitive, it just means that pilots would have to be in communicate with, communication with the Luke Tower. In fact, both of these sites, depending on the way the pilots fly, would have to talk to either Luke or Deer Valley or the Phoenix Tricon, which is the regional air traffic control folks. So it's just a busy type of airspace. We did not see any showstoppers, though. It's just a matter of communication with the pilots. Of the two sites, in terms of the airspace analysis, Site 1 was slightly better than Site 2. In fact, we had a subconsultant with us who specializes in airspace issues and took it one step further, which is would it be possible to develop an instrument approach procedure to these runway ends? And that's a critical piece for an airport. It extends the usefulness of an airport to times of low visibility, storms, dust storms, whatever it may be. And so you want to try and maximize that capability for any airport. And both of these can support an instrument approach to the runway ends. One is a little, Site 1 is a little bit better than Site 2, but they, they do kind of meet that criteria. We also looked at several environmental sensitivities, potential, excuse me, following the NEPA categories. And so this is basically a summary of those environmental, excuse me, environmental issues. What we're showing on here is the 100-year floodplain as well as wetlands and certain parcels that have, that are already developed. So there's a racetrack and a substation, electric substation, and water treatment plan in proximity. Everybody wants to know about cost? That is a consideration and was also one of the weighted categories in the ranking matrix. A brand-new airport from scratch is, can be costly. Usually the number one expense is just the acquisition of the land. In this case, we're going to also have additional expenses in relocating power lines to the, so the runways can go down. But you can see here, there's a summary and these are broad numbers. In fact, they might even be a little bit low. But about $150 million to build an initial build-out for Site 1 and almost $200 million for Site 2. And when I say initial build-out, this is a 5,600-foot runway, so that's kind of the minimum you'd want to start with. There's a Phase 2, which is extending that runway up to 7,600 feet, kind of the max that this site would need to support those general aviation aircraft. So in that, in the end, we're looking at somewhere between $250 million to $300 million to build one of these two airports. So we did a ranking summary. You know, these can be done any number of ways. I've seen them done with red light, green light, yellow light in terms of these categories. I've seen rankings from 1 to 100. We've done a number of these types of studies and I like the 1 through 5 ranking with 5 being the best because it gives you just enough nuance between sites to differentiate certain elements. So right here for Site 1, we're showing various engineering factors, including, you know, proximity to the community, you don't want to be too far, the terrain, what the earthworks would need, drainage, road access, kind of the things, again, that jumped out. So I'm looking on the right-hand side with the rank is those transmission lines. Those are a big deal and would need to be accommodated. Also is the airspace. So there's no showstoppers there, but it ranks low just because of how complex the airspace is. The instrument approach procedures are a little unusual. The slopes are a little bit higher, so this one ranks a little bit lower on that category as well. Again, Site 1, the environmental factors. So those are the NEPA categories under the factor column. And the couple that kind of jump out as both these sites are in 500-year floodplanes, which we have to take into consideration. And the 100-year floodplanes are in proximity, but those don't fall on the actual runway footprint. Other lower-ranking piece is just the air quality. Maricopa County is in a non-attainment for ozone, so there's some certain thresholds that airport activity would need to stay below and could be certain mitigating options that would have to be addressed during environmental analysis prior to an airport being built. Site 2, you know, these, the rankings came out fairly similar. The big, big factors again are those transmission lines. The terrain and earthworks necessary for Site 2 is quite substantial compared to Site 1. There's a number of kind of ravine swales that would need to be filled in order to support the runway, so it ranks quite a bit lower in terms of just the natural terrain of the site. And then on the environmental side, again, in the 500-year floodplain, near the 100-year floodplanes, so those both ranked low and again, the non-attainment would have to be addressed as well. So in the end, the total ranking for Site 1 was 88 and then for Site 2 was 77. So Site 1 stood out as a, as a better site. One last piece that's important to understand is once you put a runway down, that's not the only thing that it affects. It affects neighboring land use because you need to protect that airport so it can still be used as an airport. So this is one example of a type of overlay or zoning that you might apply to a new airport. Each of these different colored shapes has a different type of regulation, including density of population. And you can see there's several of them on the center lines of the runway, so you've got to protect the approaches. But airports necessarily affect what you can do with neighboring land. And that's one reason why you want to, you know, promote industrial commercial type uses adjacent to airports because that is compatible where a bunch of homes is not.
Brilliant. Thank you. Patrick. So I've got a couple of slides to kind of summarize the due diligence efforts. So the data clearly shows us that an air park is feasible and I think as Patrick just walked us through, although there's issues that have to be overcome, Site 1 does support a conceptual airport. I think the power lines present a very unique and interesting challenge. And as Patrick had said, the cost with it, I think it was estimated in there about $7 million. We believe that to be very low, I think is going to be significantly greater than that with the amount of power transmission lines that would have to be moved. But on the surface, the data clearly says an air park is feasible. Site 1 supports a conceptual air park. One thing that's really important to note, though, in this previous, the previous slide that Patrick had talked about, the first bullet and the way it reads is important. You need to apply, you need to apply land use policies to protect the airport. That impact of constraining development on adjacent lands is counter to the current landowner's strategy. State lands' objective is to get the highest and best use for their properties. And so by constraining lands adjacent to the airport that is not in keeping and is not consistent with their fiduciary responsibilities and what they're trying to accomplish as an individual landowner. The implications of this would inevitably lend to some level of agreement between the purchaser of, for the airport and state land to maybe have to buy more land. So instead of the 550 acres for Site 1, you may have to buy adjacent lands because they cannot market them to the same group of people that they would. That's an important thing. Another big key takeaway, and although we didn't get into the economic impact analysis today, it is important to note that this study and this effort around an airport and air park was specifically about investing in a lost leader, the airport, as a catalyzing event, right? What do we need to bring properties to the market? But when we look over the landscapes of the last several years, specifically in the north Phoenix area, the installation and construction of TSMC and the associated projects, the MAC 2300 properties that flanks it, the Biscuit Flats project, the catalyzing need is not quite the same as it once was. Where the airport very clearly played a role at the very beginning of the idea, it does not play the same impact today. But it is important for us to note the significance of the IGA that this council adopted on December 17th. So just as way of reminder for the people in the audience, on December 17th, council adopted a, I'll say, a one-of-a-kind intergovernmental agreement with State Land Department for the city to lead development efforts and installation of public infrastructure. And that public infrastructure will be reimbursed, the costs associated with it. That is a significant deal, a significant benefit to our citizens. And that effort, that IGA would have never been possible, never been possible without the exploration of this air park as a potential pathway and a catalyst for our city. So as we look at the overarching theme, the feasibility study and the site selection summary, it is very feasible and we could site an airport in Peoria. You need a minimum of 550 acres to do it for an airport and adjacent air park. It would require additional land restrictions adjacent to it. It is very important that we highlight the activation of north, of the north valley already because of TSMC and the neighboring projects greatly reduces the need for another catalyzing project. And based on that, the city is no longer going to pursue, nor are we marketing an airport in this area. I do want to highlight a couple of things.
You want to repeat that one more time for everybody?
I'll touch on one thing because there is, there is a point and I'll touch on it in another slide. So there, what was really three possible ways to go about this. It was the city pursuing a municipal airport. It was the city marketing a private entity to come in and construct one. Or there's a private entity working independent of the city to construct one on their own. And I will come back and touch on that third one, right? If a private entity without the city's support came along, what would that look like? I'll touch on that in a couple of slides. But I will just state, we are no longer pursuing and we have nobody on our team out marketing an airport for a private partner to come in and do it. Okay? I've never gotten applause like that at a table like this. I felt good for a minute.
Yeah.
I do want to highlight because I've heard some things said and I think it's important to note, and we pulled this number just the other day. To date, the city has spent about $553,000 between FY '24 and FY '25. So there was a $500,000 line item that we did not spend all of in '24. There was a $500,000 line item that we're not going to spend all of in FY '25. In totality, to date, we've spent about $553,000. Why would we spend that money? Well, the math is simple. We've spent $553,000 as a city to explore an idea and the exploration of that idea has generated a return on investment through the state land IGA of over $500 million and the tax revenues that those properties will create in perpetuity. So let me just touch on that for a second. None of that land currently pays property tax, none of it, because that's state land. It's, the land doesn't, it does nothing. So not only will the city be reimbursed for the full infrastructure installation, that means it has a positive reduction on impact fees, it has a positive impact on bringing projects to market. It means projects that this council had already approved in the CIP for $140 million and intended to never get a penny back, you will get all of that back and we will leverage that forward. So this $553,000 investment to return $500 million plus tax revenue in perpetuity might very well be, it's the best deal I've ever seen. So congratulations to the council for those efforts and the ideas that led to that. I do want to highlight because we've heard folks talk about the roads being built on in the area and part of the airport. Lake Pleasant Parkway, the design and the construction is part of the intergovernmental agreement. So the construction of that roadway, including its hard costs, soft costs, design and construction, will all be reimbursed when that, as it's built, as property is sold, that money will come back into the overall deal. So that is a fantastic, fantastic investment in return on investment. I do want to touch on, though, what happens if a private entity came in and said, hey, I saw your study. It said it was feasible. It said that there was a pathway to build at Site 1. We're a private entity. We want to do this on our own. There are three big steps.
Can you pause on that for a second?
Yes, sir.
Kind of take a step back just so everybody understands that, that part of it.
Okay.
Because I think this is a very key.
Yeah, so to the point, the city is not pursuing, nor are we marketing. We are not inviting people to the city. But if somebody was to come in and they had the money and said, we read the reports and we see the viability of this, we want to go forward with it. What would they have to do to find success? What would they have to do to actually construct one? And there's three very big pieces of the process. And this is, this is before you get into the difficulties of navigating the FAA. But just to bring it to market, you have a special use permit process that is governed by city code. I gave the reference there. Chapter 21, 857-G. It's a special use permit. Essentially, this is a public process for an overlay. Because an airport can effectively go into any zoning, you have to have an approved overlay in order to construct it. So ultimately, it would be like a new zoning, it would function almost like a new zoning case. It would walk through that process and ultimately, council would have to vote yes or no, should that go forward, right? So a private entity could not go forward without a council vote. That's one. Number two, they would have to submit and receive approval through the state land application process. So they would have to approach state land and say, we see the economic viability of this. We think it's the highest and best use for your land. All of the things I described earlier that I described as a detractor, they would have to convince them that it's a benefit. So not only would they have to convince them it's a benefit, then they have to submit, they have to go through the process, they have to do the full due diligence, then the property could go up for public auction. And that entity who came after the special use permit and wanted to build the airport would have to prevail at a public auction. So that barrier to entry is quite significant. But I think it is, and Mayor, thank you for pausing me, it is important to note that there is a pathway. It is a very difficult, and I would say next to impossible, but nothing is impossible. So it is important that we are transparent and talk to people about what it is, but I will go back to the statement of the day, the city is neither pursuing nor marketing an airport to invite anybody to the city. And if anybody watches this video, I would say, we're not inviting to go do this work. So at the end of the day, that road would be very hard to road. Okay? My last slide and then we'll wrap this up and take any questions from you folks. Next steps. So the city staff are going to do a couple of things tomorrow morning. We're going to put this report out on the website for people to consume. We will most likely put a cover letter that goes along with it. It might take us a couple more days for that. And I think the importance of a covered letter is when they closed the 2,000 study, they didn't really put a bow on that. They didn't really explain why they didn't proceed. I think it will be important for us to clearly articulate, this is feasible, it is viable, it could be done. But for these reasons, this decision was made not to go forward, so there's a very clear end to this story. Just to make sure that it's abundantly clear, there are no airport, air park related, we're not asking for more study money in FY '26. We're done with the exercise. Okay? It is our goal to advance the intergovernmental agreement requirements for design and construction of the public infrastructure for the Peoria Innovation Corps. So we're going to lead the entitlement effort. We're going to advance that work. We hope to be back here this time next year with the full zoning case for all 6,700 acres. And we're intending to complete design and start construction on infrastructure projects late summer. So I would expect us to be mobilizing for construction in the July timeframe and we're going to continue to march forward. going to continue to march forward on that significant deal. Uh, but keeping in and remaining consistent with council direction, staff are continuing to pursue acquisition of land for economic development purposes in that area, okay? Uh, and with that, Mayor, I'd be more than happy to take any questions from, uh, the council.
Counselor Edwards?
Thank you, Mayor. A good presentation, Mike, thank you. I just have a question. So what lessons did you guys learn, um, for this, from this study, uh, and, uh, that was different from the 2000 study?
Yeah, I, I, thank you for that question. Um, I think we've had a lot of people say, "This was studied in 2000, so why do we need to do it again?" Uh, I think first and foremost, we took a very different approach to it. Uh, we took the, I think the first one was a study to see if it was viable, right? Could you do it? We took a different lens. We were full-tilt to go build one. And so in that, it really challenged us to understand the economics of it, what is it going to take to construct it, what are those, it wasn't just could it be done, it was really, how are we going to do it? And I jokingly would tell people, "I'm trying to prove how not to build an airport," because in that pathway, we were going to find how to build one. We found how to build one. But the other thing we learned along that pathway, and we've made it clear, is that by studying the economics and understanding the other effects, um, there's a lot that's changed, right? There's a lot of things in the space, so, uh, we learned more about airspace than before. We learned more about the interplay between catalyzing projects, right? Back in 2000, there was nothing here, there was no catalyzing projects on, heck, the Four Corners weren't there, right? So there were no catalyzing activities, where today, we have, uh, TSMC and other projects to catalyze the area. I think we also learned a lot about how to maneuver and how we would handle moving power lines and doing things like that. These are all learnings we take forward to the development of the Peoria Innovation Corps for commercial, employment, residential play, all of this learning directly applies. You know, I, I think as we look back from 2000, the group who led the 2000 effort, they were really looking to put Peoria on the map and have a catalyzing event to grow. I think it's important to note that the previous mayor and council in 2017, they sought a private airport at that's exact Site One location for Amazon H2. I mean, they marketed it that way. This was a real thing. So with this, with this group, I think you guys have challenged us to say, "We want economic development," and, and airport, airpark is one of those. And so ultimately, I think we've learned how it's a benefit, how it's a detriment, we found people who don't like it, we found people who do. For as many cheers as we've got, I'll get calls tomorrow, people disappointed by this decision, but ultimately, the council's objective was economic development, and I believe that there is a very clear path to economic development, uh, through the IGA with state land, through the efforts to continue to pursue land that doesn't require the, uh, construction of an airport.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jen, anything? Matt, anything? There's a button here if you guys need to, just making sure you.
Okay.
Great. Okay. Um, thank you for your presentation, I'll, I'll, I'll make one comment here. So out of this, just to, just to clarify, out of $553,000 spent, we have, just so everybody in the room understands this, this exercise, um, out of this, we're receiving potentially one to 1.5 or greater billion dollars for state education out of the sale of all of the state land. Uh, that goes directly back to state education, that's one. Two is from taxes, fees, construction fees, of everything that will be constructed on this land, of the deal that we actually put together with state land, is between 1.1 and 1.8 billion dollars in construction t, fees and taxes over the next 20 years. Uh, $500 million of reimbursed infrastructure. It's like rece, the city of Peoria receiving $500 million of revenue, but back from the state. Um, has that ever happened, Henry? It's never been contemplated until this concert, until we brought this forward. And, uh, about $100 million in taxes over the next 10 years generated by, by all this. Uh, so I would make that investment of $553,000 any day, and probably, Mike, you're a finance guy, probably twice on Sundays, right? Um, this is better than Nancy Pelosi's stock trades, I think, at this point. So, I think everybody would agree on that. All right. So, thank you for your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And we, study session is adjourned.